Let me begin with the announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to response reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Development and Planning pursuant to the Open Meeting and Public Records Law. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. All right, and at six thirty, which is about to come up, we will go into our public hearing for the Chipotle Mexican Grill project.
Is that on your tape? I'm sorry, is that on?
Oh, I forgot this thing.
Put it on. My being at it.
Help me.
Let me see.
It's not my bailiwick.
All set.
Okay, good. Now, this is a public hearing regarding the definitive site plan and special permit for Chipotle Mexican Grill, three sixty Timpani Boulevard, Gardner. And I will read the notice of public hearing and public informational meeting into the record. In accordance with the City of Gardner zoning code, Article ten, Section six seven five ten ten, Site Plan Review, and Article eight, Section six seven five seven seven zero D, Drive-Thru Performance and Design Standards, and Article eleven, Section six seven five dash one one seven zero, Special Permits, notice is hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct a public informational meeting and public hearing concurrently on Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M. in the Hubbard Conference Room, second floor in the Manca Annex, one fifteen Pleasant Street, Gardner, to consider the definitive site plan application and the special permit application submitted by Derek Kiss, Civil and Environmental Consultants of two fifty West Old Wilson Bridge Road, Suite two fifty, Wellington, Ohio, on behalf of Chipotle Mexican Grill. The site plan approval application is for a twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot Chipotle restaurant, and the special permit application is for a restaurant drive-thru to be located at three sixty Timpani Boulevard, Gardner. All persons interested in this matter who desire to offer testimony are invited to attend the hearing. The application and site plan are available for viewing at the City of Gardner Department of Community Development and Planning, one fifteen Pleasant Street, Gardner. Okay. And we have the engineer still waiting out. We have no engineer, and we have no representatives from the company yet. It's quite possibly a weather delay.
I'm assuming that's what it is, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, what I'm going to do is until further developments here, I'm going to put this public hearing into recess. Let's give it ten minutes. We convene at six fifty-two. Ten minutes.
Move the mail.
Yeah. Convene this public hearing for the definitive site plan and special permit for the Chipotle Mexican Grill, the three sixty Timpani Boulevard, Gardner, Mass. Good evening, sir. You are?
My name is Derek Kiss with Civil Environmental Consultants. This is Dustin Doherty, also a civil environmental consultant. We are here on behalf of Wheeler Real Estate Company for this Chipotle grill located at Timpani Plaza.
Very good, sir. The floor is yours.
All right. So up on the screen is our set of plans that we submitted for the definitive review. Here's our title sheet. I'm going to skip forward to just walk through the plans. So here, here is the existing plaza currently at the site of the proposed Chipotle is an existing bank that is no longer in business, so it's just sitting there baking. As you can see here, it's located by the north entrance of Timpani Plaza. Those traffic enters here, and it can currently enter into the drive-thru for the bank. There is associated parking for the shopping center. It's not shown on this sheet, but the main building is down here that has like the movie theater, the Dollar Tree, and various businesses. So as you can see here, the main entrance is two-way traffic that has an island dividing traffic, but has this opening here, so cars can come and access the bank. So for this site plan, it shows the existing additions and also the limits of what we will be removing as part of this plan. So everything within this thick dashed line will be removed, and it will make more sense on the next sheet where it shows the improvements, but as part of the demolition, we will be removing the entire building, and then we'll be removing these islands in the drive aisle because we will be needing to reconfigure the site. So here's additional removal for other parking improvements we're doing throughout the site. All right, so here is the proposed site plan for the Chipotle building. As you can see, the Chipotle is located generally in the same location as the existing bank. To meet the code of the City of Gardner, we had to provide two lanes of traffic around the building. One is to provide ten spaces of stacking per code for a fast-food restaurant, even though Chipotle wants us to point out this isn't fast food. It's mobile ordering only, so you can't pull up and order your food and pick it up at the window. You have to order it on your phone first. So because of that, they provided some figures stating that the average wait time is around, I think it was two minutes, with a max time of, or with a max stacking of about four cars. So because of that, you can see we have our ten cars here, so we all have plenty, plenty of stacking spaces available for the Chipotle site. So yeah, so we have the stacking lane, and then around here, we also have a bypass lane, so anyone who enters the site and changes their mind can get out of line, drive around, or access these two spots. Our previous plan had these as polling spots, but they were too close to the property line for the setback requirements of the zoning code, so we revised them to be parallel spaces. And this way, it provides sufficient offset from the right-of-way line, also does not impact the existing monument sign, which is right here. And that's a large sign that has a different tenants for the whole shopping center listed. And so new Chipotle will have outdoor dining area for patrons to come. The, we'll have sufficient lighting throughout the site. That's what these symbols are. There's a separate photometric plan at the end of the plans that I will show you guys, but you see there's lights here, here, there's some in the corner, and then the corners do. So the dumpster enclosure will be located right here, and this will allow the dump trucks to come, garbage trucks to come, get their stuff, go around the site, and not, not be in the way of cars in the stacking lane. We also provided at around the dumpster enclosure a sidewalk that can connect to the existing curb ramps located at the intersection at Timpani Plaza in the entrance, so anyone who's at the intersection will be able to safely access the Chipotle without having to walk in the grass or walk in the driveway. Another, another feature of this I want to point out is how the existing bank had the drive-thru lane, that you entered directly from the plaza entrance, and that could potentially be problematic with stacking at the bank if there were more than a couple cars waiting to use the E T M. or pull up. They could potentially be backing up in the main entrance and impacting any cars and free flow coming into the site. So as part of the Chipotle development, we got rid of that to more isolate the Chipotle as its own separate site within the plaza instead of just how the existing bank's kind of just a bank in the middle of the pavement. So this way, it'll keep all cars, all circulation for the Chipotle separate from the main plaza. And during the design of this, because of the requirement for the stacking, the length of the stacking lane and the bypass lane to be in compliance with the zoning regulations, we had to shift the building to the east, which is down on the page, in order to allow a lot of those lanes to go and not be too close to the right-of-way. So because of that, we had to shift the building slightly from where the existing bank was, and with those stacking lane and bypass lane, that caused us to impact parking spaces that were down here. And so that's what this is. We are now proposing to extend this island, extend this grass area, and basically go around the whole site to, like I said, with curb, to completely isolate the Chipotle from the rest of the shopping center. And so the only entrance will be right here where cars can go in and out, and we made sure to design that driveway to be perpendicular with the driveway in the shopping center, so everyone should have a clear line of sight when they're entering and exiting the Chipotle. And so, and so with that, these are new islands down here with these diagonal hatching on it. And so we added those into direct the traffic when they're going through and make this a defined drive aisle through the site. If you look at the existing conditions here, better show this one. You'd see here, the main drive aisle comes below the building on the sheet, and then it's just a big open space of pavement there, and it's kind of not well-defined on how cars should be circulating in this area. They kind of, it's just a big open space, and cars can go wherever, plus exiting the bank, there's cars coming from this area, and they might be wanting to go around while cars are coming in, and this, this whole, this whole area is not, not the best or the safest place for cars to be driving through. So the new design will eliminate all that confusion for any drivers that are entering and exiting the site. Another thing I want to point out was this existing monument sign. So you can see in here, this is all pavement right here, so currently it's just a big sign in the middle of pavement. It is off to the side, so cars shouldn't hit it, but they could hit it if they're not paying attention. There's no curb or anything stopping them. There's just two little, two little ballards about four inches wide, only on the edge, so you're just hoping they hit those ballards instead of the rest of the ten-foot sign. So, so with our new design, this monument sign will now be in a grass area, completely separate from the driving area. So that's another increase in safety for any drivers entering and exiting the site and using this Chipotle. And so that's, that's how the layout of the site got made. Like I said, the drive aisle had to shift, so we had these new parking islands down here, and then as part of that, we also had to extend some over here to redefine the, just redefine the whole entrance and exit to the plaza to make sure it's safe and cars can properly enter and exit. We did revise this island here based on a comment received from Rob to move the stop bar back to, to just stop cars back here instead of here and permit better flow leaving this drive aisle and try and improve this intersection as much as we could. And so these, these dark edges here are just pavement replacement from where the old islands were, so that's what that's showing. Then another portion of the plan was over on this, this end of the plaza. So it's currently here, the, basically these hatched areas are the existing islands on this plan. This is showing proposed pavement because we're going to be removing the islands and replacing them with pavement, but so here, the, the row of parking ended where those dark hatches are, and we are now extending the parking to add additional parking in the plaza, so to provide more parking. And we added in some center line striping here to, again, better define where drivers should be driving and just, just make it clear because this area is kind of, it's just really wide and open, and it's kind of, it can get kind of confusing to know where to drive or accidentally drive on the wrong side or something.
Just up the grays, anywhere you want.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Where are you adding parking? I'm sorry.
So
I'm lost.
Okay, sorry. I'll back up. So this is the existing drawing.
Yeah.
So this is where the existing islands are, and so what I was just showing on the previous plan is we're adding additional parking here, 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 at the end of these to add additional parking at the end of these rows. And so that's what is shown here. So we're reducing this, the width of this driveway now between those parking spots along the roadway and then these stacks of parking. So we're moving these up further, adding additional in. So it's a little hard to see on the screen, but these bold lines are, are proposed striping, so, so wherever there's these dark lines are the added spaces, and then this, and then this hatching is pavement striping.
Okay, I see now. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that's, that's the layout of the site. So here, here's our utility drawing. So this shows how we're connecting our utilities to the building and to the existing utilities on the site. The building will have downspouts from the roof that will discharge onto the pavement. The grading plan is designed, it's on another sheet, but so water will drain around the building that way and this way. So the water's discharging here, but it will make its way back here. We added in a curb cut here based on discussing, discussions with Rob as well, too, and made that a low point to help direct water to travel through the island at this point as opposed to these crosswalks. It won't capture all the water because you can only control the water so much, but this is the low point on the site, so water is directed here. We also, back here, these lines are the sanitary connections, so the box with the two circles is a grease interceptor that all the grease lines within the building are connected to. And so you can intercept the grease and collect it and then remove it at a later time to keep the grease out of the city's collection system. And then this other line here is also sanitary, but it's, it's come from sources that don't produce grease, such as the bathroom, or like a floor drain in the bathroom or something. So that's why they connect here and connect to this existing manhole on the site. We also provided a fire hydrant located within this island per a request from the fire marshal. So we provided that here, and this is to allow a fire hydrant to be located closer to the plaza to improve the performance of the fire department in case there's a need for it. There, there's an existing fire hydrant up here, and there's one, it's off the sheet, but down by the Tractor Supply Company, so there's one at each end of the plaza, but we are adding this one in here to, to, one, serve the Chipotle if it needs it, but also just can help get the fire hydrant or fire trucks a little closer to the building. So this is the fire hydrant, and then our water line that we're, we're connecting to this existing water line here, which is along the north side of the property. And so we're having to run the water all the way over here, then we're having a tee for the fire hydrant, and then the water service connection to our building. And the intent with that is to reuse the existing service that provides service to the bank now, but as part of our, the contractor's efforts when they're building this, they will, they will find that water line and confirm the size and confirm the condition and to ensure it's adequate for Chipotle because last thing we want to do is to use an old water line that's been there for fifty years, and it breaks or it's insufficient for Chipotle's needs. So that is something the contractor will be coordinating with us during construction to ensure that it's what we need. And then, and here's a profile of the sanitary showing the connection. Our next sheet is the grading plan. So like I mentioned, the whole site in general drains from the west to the east, which is from the top to the bottom, and we are basically putting our Chipotle in this area, but we're trying to maintain the natural or the, the existing grading of the site. So water will continue to flow this way. It'll come around the building on both directions and then continue on towards, towards the bottom of the screen where there are catch basins and storm sewers there that are currently serving this development. Our next sheet is sediment erosion control plan, and this is just to ensure any sediment like dirt that gets produced during construction is captured and doesn't just get dumped into the storm sewers and cause you guys problems down the line where you have reduced capacity in the storm sewers, and also that sediment can make its way to wherever this discharges, I think to a stream to the north, which can impact the health of that stream and pollute it. So we're providing a stabilized construction entrance here, which just helps maintain that entrance for the large trucks and helps capture some of the dirt that's on their wheels when they leave, and then a filter sock down here, which will just capture any of that sediment on the site, and that'll be cleaned regularly by the contractor during construction. Let's see, our next sheet, so this is the landscaping plan. So our intention for this is we have all this increased, um, grass area. You can see here, all this hedge right here is grass, so this entire area will now have grass, and we are adding in some shrubs here to replace, there were, there are some existing shrubs here that we were planning to remove because they're really, really tall and block the view of the Chipotle, so their intent was to remove those and replace them with something else that will still look nice to the shopping center, but will have lower, a lower height, so you're not blocking the shopping center as much. We also added a lot of, excuse me, shrubs around the dumpster enclosure to try and help just screen that area from any traffic coming into the shopping center or driving by on the roadway. So we added additional screening there per some of our previous conversations with the city. The material of the trash enclosure, it's going to be a wall, and it will be painted the same color as the Chipotle, so it'll match and make it kind of a, make it a uniformed site instead of just a unmatching trash container, trash enclosure in the corner. And we are also, as part of this, I mentioned, there's this gap here now where the existing drive-through lane is, we'll be connecting that, those two islands to make it one island, and we'll be placing that with mulch that will match the existing islands out there now, so it looks the same as what's there, and we're adding some additional shrubs here and then just, just throughout the site to help just make it look nicer. So we have it all, all around here in our islands. We have it in this area, too, at the entrance to the Chipotle. We looked at the shrubs in this area in particular to make sure that they do not grow too high, so any vehicles that are coming around this corner exiting the Chipotle can see over those shrubs. So, so we're not basically creating a wall that they can't see through that could potentially cause problems with this intersection, so we made sure to look at those to make sure they were suitable for that area. And then these other islands that we're adding here, when we're changing the alignment of this driveway, we're adding some trees and some small shrubs here as well. Yes, so that's our, the landscaping plan. Here's our signage and striping plan, too, so it again shows, shows the line striping for these islands over here, the center line striping. Here are ADA crosswalks, and the ADA spaces for the Chipotle are located here. These are ADA compliant, and there's ADA compliant crosswalks to the site, so they'll be able to safely get to the site, any handicapped visitors. And then stop bars here, again, like I mentioned. We addressed Rob's comment because it made a lot of sense about moving the stop bar back here. And here, this is the south side of the plaza again, and this, this better shows where the new parking will go. So these bold lines is new pavement striping, so you can see here, we're adding four new spaces here, will be six new spaces, here's five new spaces for, so we're adding quite a few parking spaces here, and that'll just give the plaza more parking while also, like I mentioned, narrowing this drive aisle. It's still, I believe it's twelve feet drive aisle, so it's, it meets the code for what, what two-way traffic within a parking lot should be. So narrowing it down actually helps define, define the traffic flow a little bit better, and I think will help with cars driving through the site.
Derek, while we're, while we're on that, just a quick question on the islands. The islands you're removing, are those painted on surface or are they?
Some of them are painted, some of them are like curved islands.
And what are you replacing with all painted islands?
We are in this area. The intention, these, these ones are striped in this area, but then over here by the Chipotle, these are all going to have curb and have the grass and landscaping within them.
Can you go back to the other one, please, single?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer to the city engineer on that, too. If, if they're taking out curved islands, whether it would be, it's sufficient to replace with just the painted islands? I mean, I, I, I feel I should, if you're going to take something out, you should replace it with, with what was taken out.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to have the islands with curbs. It's somewhat better for traffic flow. I mean, the painted islands get the point across as well, but just for, you know, consistency throughout the site, I think it's a good idea to, to put the curbs there.
And also, thanks, Rob. Also, that stop line to the left, can you explain that? Why is it there? I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Yeah, so it's here because we lined it up with the, the radius of this entrance here, so it'll stop cars coming in and getting in the way of cars coming in here. This box here is that Tractor Supply Company storage area, so we, there would be no cars or traffic or anything over here, so we, we put it here, so just to prevent cars from coming into this intersection.
Well, if I'm confused here, I wonder how the drivers are going to be when they're driving in the parking lot. It just looks out of place.
If I can't drive. You can still drive around the south side of the parking, so cars are going along that end of the parking area and coming across the top there. So you would have cars coming, you know, perpendicular to that line. I know coming up the, the page and taking a right to head out, it's a little awkward, but
Yeah.
It does.
And then coming in and, well, I guess coming in would, yeah. But what about moving it back to where the, the box is? If you're trying to
Yeah, I'd say this area is just a little funky, to be honest, because I think, because if it got moved back here, then your car would be back here, and you wouldn't really be able to see into here. So if you stopped here, you would stop here, but then still slowly creep forward and look around, so that's why we put it here, just
It just seems like it's sitting in I mean, I'm sure there's a rhyming reason, I just, I was a little, I don't know, confused on the location, but you explained it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're, we can do something different if Yeah, I mean, we're, we can do something different if, if someone.
I really don't see what though.
I know, yeah, because it's always tough, yeah, when you just have cars coming up here and these aren't, it's not really an intersection, but like cars should be stopping here, but yeah, you're right, then they're, they're turning and. But as they're coming here.
I was going to suggest maybe that, at the end of that lane, having a stop sign. I, I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll lead up to you guys, you're, you're the engineers.
Yeah, it's not a showstopper, but something, it's something to give a little more thought to.
Okay. Next sheet, here is our photometric plan. And this shows the light levels produced by the different light fixtures we're putting on the site. So each one of these numbers is a foot candle, which I believe means a candle held one feet, one foot high, something like that. I should know that, I apologize. I, this is the industry standard on how you measure light levels, I know that. So usually in a lot of, lot of parking lots, we work in, in cities in Ohio, at least a minimum foot candle in parking areas is half a foot and drive aisles is a foot. So as you can see throughout the site, we have, we exceed those all around. We made sure to include a light here at the dumpster pad. So this way it's lighting up this area. So any employees that exit out of the back of the building to take the garbage out, across this crosswalk, there will be sufficient lighting for them to see and cars to see them as they're coming into the plaza or coming into the drive through line. Also provided light, just lighting here and around the site and at the patio, just to provide proper lighting for the site to make sure it's not too dark or nobody's tripping over anything or nobody feels unsafe. So that's our lighting plan. And then the final sheet on the plans that we have is for the parking. And this is something we've had discussions with Trevor and Rob in the past about discussing this. As I mentioned, we had to, here's a good way you can see it. So this dark box is our new Chipotle, but here on this aerial is the bank. So you see, we had to shift it about 20 feet this way, which, and then with these double drive aisles shifted everything this way. So we had to remove parking here. And so this is just an exhibit showing the parking that we removed, existing parking counts and then where we're adding parking. That's what these, these cyan bubbles are. And this took into account our, the architect on our project, their, his name is Deshaun from Onyx. He performed a parking study that was included in the submittal packet that was submitted back in December. And during that parking study, he measured the square footage of each of the units in the building, took into account their use and their typical net usable area to calculate the required number of parking spaces that are required for the site. And so we used his parking study to, to evaluate the site, looking at how many were removed, how many are existing, how many we're adding. And, and that, and that's, that was part of driving these additional spaces here so that we can provide more spaces since we're removing some near the Chipotle. And so up here are the parking counts. So there were 755 parking spaces on the site. We are proposing to remove 54 of them for the Chipotle. This 88 spaces was previously removed from Tractor Supply and that's what these red boxes are. They use them for outdoor storage. So that's a big chunk of the shopping center already that was used for storage. And then here's where we are proposing our additional spaces. We have 33 in the front and we are providing seven parking spaces behind the building. And these parking spaces can be utilized for employees of Tractor Supply Company and the new Aldi that's going in. The Aldi is this light brown box, Tractor Supply is this dark box. And yeah, so that'll provide parking to, to the workers, to these two tenants, so they can enter and exit the back of the building and enter into their work areas in the back. And one thing that we evaluated during, during this was the Aldi's improvements are putting in a new loading dock behind the building. And they're putting in a 90-degree loading dock as opposed to the existing loading docks, as you can see right here on this aerial, they're diagonal. So as part of this, we want to make sure that Aldi can still get in here and park their trucks. So that's what, that's what these colorful lines on here are showing. It's a, this is an interstate semi trailer. So your typical design trailer you would use for these situations and those are the big, big semis you see everywhere on the, the highway. So it's as big as of a truck that should be coming in here. And this is showing how they're able to come in here, back up into their space. And then we have it shown they can come up here and turn around because it, it is kind of tight back here in general, but as you can see, these additional spaces are not in the way of this truck. And there's, and there's plenty of room for it to maneuver here, especially if there's not a truck here. But the way it's configured is there is sufficient space for those trucks to get in and unload and do their business. So that's a run through of the plans and what we're proposing for the Chipotle. I know the Chipotle is very excited to come to Gardner. I, I believe there is no Chipotle in Gardner right now, so they're, they're very excited to enter into a new market and serve, serve the city.
So the restaurant building is, is the same footprint as the bank, just moved over. I'm talking dimensionally, it's the same.
It's, it's close.
Same size as the old bank building?
Yeah, close, like it's not exact, but you can see here it's, this, this black is the roof, so that's like the size of it. So it's almost the same size, it looks like the Chipotle is slightly smaller. Yeah, it, it's a pretty small building.
Now, having that building over the way it is, as compared to where the old bank building is right now, is, is rooftop runoff going to be adequately managed because of that movement?
Yeah, yeah, so the roof, the rooftop drainage will be coming out on this side, but the way the, this is a high point right here in the middle of the site. And then the water's being pushed, pushed away from the building and then coming back around. So the downspouts will discharge here, but they, the grading is designed to get the water around the building and then continue flowing this way as it already is. The existing site is draining to the east.
Okay, I didn't have any further questions. Do you have anything else?
So do you, do you want to continue with this project? Do you want to recess and open up the public meeting for the ramain? Because it's supposed to be at 7:15. And then that's, that's a quick one. That will be a continuation to the next meeting that will come back to this, or do you want to?
No, let's press on to this. Yeah, we've got a rhythm going.
So I, I mentioned the curbing for the islands. I'm not sure if that's something that you'd be willing to do. I know it, it's getting off of the actual Chipotle site, but it is, it's directly related to the project. So I think that's, I think myself and the city engineer agree. That's probably the best course of action. I think you guys did a great job. Originally, the, the plan was designed to have 30 to 40 spaces behind the building. And after the development review and, and comments from the city engineer, they came back and redesigned it where they bumped out additional parking in the main parking lot, as you see here. So I think in it's, it's obviously controlling the traffic, I think that in the travel lanes a lot better.
Yeah.
However, if there's just painted islands there and we, we all know they go away after time, over time and people will park on them and.
I can speak to that real quick. I did talk to the developer and they're very happy to be able to take those, those islands that were currently showing a stripe and make them curb. So we'll, we'll curb those and make sure we incorporate them into the plan and install appropriately so that they're, they're not paint that has to be maintained. It'll, it'll be a curb to be able to better define the access through there. And they're, they're more than happy to do that for consistency and the look back through the entire complex.
All right, thank you.
On the, if, on the utility plan, the, I see one line that goes in for the water.
Yeah.
I think, is the building sprinkled?
So what they're proposing is a separate sprinkler line, that's the new line with the hydrant off of it. And their plan is to reuse the existing water service. If it's sufficient, when the contractor digs it up, he'll, they'll verify size, condition. If it's, we've already agreed that if it's suitable for reuse, they can connect to that to service the domestic. Should they find that it's not, they'll have to run another line over to the eight inch main.
Is it showing on here or should it be?
Yeah, they've, they've noted it, it's.
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's really well described in their notes.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard to.
Is there a 12-inch line that comes down off the back into the Mexican restaurant, down next to the movie theater? There's a hydrant next to the movie theater.
It's an eight inch that comes down.
That's eight inches, is it?
Yep.
That goes all the way down to the.
It goes all the way. Yeah.
So that's eight inches goes all the way down.
Yep.
So Derek, when you guys start the demolition and then move on to construction, do you have a plan for construction vehicles coming in and out of the site and how that's going to be managed?
Yeah, so the plan as we're showing here is to just limit the entrance to the site, to the Chipotle site right here. So not allow them to come in anywhere else where they're constructing these islands to focus their entry and exit points right here to the site. As far as exiting the plaza, we can, I guess we can have them do whatever you guys think would be best. My thought was to have them come here and go in and out of that south entrance if they can. It may be a little tricky because that light's not signalized, but this one is, but we try and keep the construction traffic out of the main entrance to these places because they're slow and dirty and they shouldn't drop things off their trucks, but they might and it's better to keep them separated. So the thought was for that south entrance to have them utilize that. So down here, because this, I know this is, this entrance is, it's used, but it's not. It's busy, it's a signalized entrance.
So how, how long is your construction timeframe? Do you know how?
I.
Between construction, demolition, any ideas?
I don't, off the top of my head, that would be, I know Wheeler's working with Chipotle now on their, their agreement, but I believe the intent was to be done like early summer, mid summer. Is that sound right?
And, and I can speak to that business, any fair facts with Wheeler. Our, our construction timeline plan is to start in March to finish we can with the thaw. And we would finish and hand it over to the Chipotle. Our hope is the end of June, so somewhere right around there.
And is Chipotle actually build the building?
No, we are building it now.
Okay, so that's the whole project overall.
Exactly, correct.
Okay, thanks Tony. So my only concern with the construction vehicles, I think it should be, I think it should be determined. You have a controlled intersection over here and, and an uncontrolled over there to the south with traffic flying down that roadway. If you have dump trucks coming in and out, it could be rather dangerous. It might be safer to utilize the controlled intersection. I don't know, Rob, if you have a, a opinion one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly gives drivers a big equipment, more time. That southern entrance is a little trickier on the exit, turning right, presumably they're, they're going to take a right out of the parking lot. I know the lanes aren't as wide there, the turn, unless they went around, down and up, so they were parallel. Getting out, they're going to be at an angle. I mean, they can do it. I personally think it's, they have an easier time going out the main entrance. I know they want to keep trucks in charge. But I mean, daily traffic to this building outside of when heavy equipment's there for, you know, excavation and concrete is probably limited to, you know, contractors' trucks with the trailers parked on site. Maybe you should have a, a plan in place for your contractors. But I think at the end of the day, it's how can they get out the easiest and probably the least impact to customers using the plaza?
Yeah, we can definitely talk to the contractor. I know Tony's in the process of contracting with one, hopefully. And yeah, one, once, once that gets in place and there's a contractor for the project, we will definitely talk to them and we can reach back out to you guys to confirm our plan. But we're, yeah, we can definitely have them come out the main entrance if they need to turn left or any heavy equipment that may be slow, come out that you don't want to be pulling out. So we're, we're open to whatever everyone agrees is the best way to move forward. And it, and it will be the contractor's responsibility to keep the, the area surrounding the site clean during construction. So if they are coming out the main entrance and they get it dirty, they'll need to clean that up. Because, yeah, we do not want to, we want to impact the rest of the plaza as little as possible during construction.
Mr. Chair, do you want to go through the, the list of responses for, from the city engineer's comments?
Yes, we should probably.
We did go through them on, in the previous meeting after, but.
If, if I can just add.
Please.
I've been through the revisions to my comments and I'm satisfied with everything that, and I know I didn't provide you a memo saying such. But I'm, with the comments I've made and their responses, I'm perfectly satisfied.
Are you satisfied with the stormwater plan?
The overall, we had talked about perhaps incorporating some stormwater, best management practices, particularly some underground recharge. It's not the best site for it to see a pavement. The grades don't typically work because just of depths, groundwater, things like that. I think the, the big point here to take away is that there's overall a reduction in impervious area by I think like about 4,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Which is going to lead towards natural recharge through grass areas and mulched islands, so.
So that kind of makes it move.
I, I, I think to, you know, outside of very expensive construction to get very little return, I, I think just the sheer reduction in impervious area lends itself to, it makes it a better site as far as stormwater. You get less runoff, a little bit more infiltration and that's the goal anyway, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So can I, I just, a couple of quick questions.
Please do.
On those comments, so Rob, you're good with just the cover sheet being stamped? I mean, I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we talk a little bit about the, the light poles Derek, that might be impacted? I know, I think what part of your response was that some will remain in, in place.
Yes.
But not, not be within an island, is that correct?
Yeah, so, uh, let me go. This sheet will show it. So these will be relocated light poles because when we reconfigure this, it will be in the way of the strip aisle. So these ones will be relocated to be in these islands. But as far as the light poles go down here. Maybe they're on a different sheet. Anyways, for, I can just explain it because they're missing one here for some reason. So yeah, so there's light poles that are in these islands now, some of these islands. And when we remove these islands, that'll now become pavement. But because we're not changing the configuration of the parking, when we add those new spaces in, those light poles will be on the center line of the parking spaces still. So the, the plan is to leave the, the poles in place, but they will still be along the alignment of the center line of these two parking aisles.
What are those light poles? What are those light poles mounted to?
I believe it's I believe it's a concrete base.
How high? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I I feel like they're just a couple of feet tall, but I I would have to check. I don't know for certain.
High enough so where a car would hit the concrete and not the pole?
It should, yeah.
Yeah. Although I don't know if that really matters. If it gets hit hard enough. I I.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I guess you have that throughout the entire site anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. That's a good point. Like, they're not shown on here, but there is lighting throughout this parking area. So there are other light poles that located like here and here and stuff. And that that is pretty typical for these large parking lot designs, too.
My only concern would be if it's if it's mounted on a base that's fairly close to the surface, you know, of the parking area where the poles exposed.
No, that's that's a good point. We will definitely we'll look at that and we can modify those if we need to or potentially.
So you might need to put a couple of bollards in.
Yeah, that's I was thinking like a bollard or two or something if that is an issue because, yeah, that protects drivers who hit it and the pole falling down and and it protects the property.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I believe the existing lighting is on concrete bollards.
Okay.
The only other comment I had was the sidewalk that comes down from the entrance into the site. I know it's been modified a couple of times.
Yeah.
Is there any way to eliminate the right angles or?
Some of the bends.
And just kind of have more windy, you know, something that looks a little.
Something a little pervy and prettier.
Rather than, you know, right angled turns three or four times down the sidewalk. Any?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can revise that to make it.
Meanders down a little bit more rather than bang, 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 you know.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at that. This is engineers aren't always artists. I think that's what this is, to be honest with you. But, yeah, we can look at making this a little more windy. The reasoning it is kind of this funky path is just because this is kind of a steep slope. So we're trying to.
No, understood, yeah.
Yeah, reduce it as much as we could while providing providing some landings that are flatter and give people space to turn around at those tight angles. But, yeah, we could definitely revise that alignment of the sidewalk to.
The existing signs want to stay?
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, so right now, there's an existing sign that's exclusively for the bank.
You're going to reuse it?
Yeah, so the intent is to reuse the pole, change the sign with something with Chipotle sign, but of the like same size and intent of what's there now. They're not trying to make anything bigger than what's there now or or change it drastically. They're just trying to they would like to have their own dedicated sign and repurpose the foundation and pole that's there now.
I seen on the other end where the marquee sign is. Are you able to get a I'm not too sure about how high that sign is. Now you're going to be able to get a truck in there, but now you're planting grass. I'm not I'm not too sure how they change their signs now. Do they use a a lift of some sort to change your signs? Do you know?
I don't know.
So I'm just trying to figure out how they're going to change the signs if you're planting all that grass there. Is there room for a truck to go with the old?
Yeah, I mean, there will be room for a truck to they well, during the construction for this project, they can do.
Well, yeah.
They can do it before they build the house.
After, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not too sure.
But, yeah, they're I mean, the.
Because I'm not too sure what those two blocks where you where it is now. I'm not too sure what those two things are right there.
Right here.
They're parking?
Yeah. That's parallel parking, yeah.
There is parking, so.
Yeah, and so these spaces are.
So I guess so I guess they could use that there then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. For reference, these parking spaces, I believe, are ten feet wide by twenty-two feet long.
Oh, okay. I wasn't too sure that's what that was.
Yeah, yeah, so for the pair of those spaces are required to be bigger. So that just gives you reference for the size, but, yeah, they'll they'll be able to access.
I'm just curious, too, how this works on this digital drive up. It's just just one stop once they get to the window? They say their name and they have to stop again or twice before they get to the?
You pull just up to the window and show them your phone and show them like your receipt.
And they get stuff right there.
Yeah.
They hand out there.
Yeah, yeah, you order.
Do you say to the clown on which Chipotle I can help if you if you allow?
Yes.
Right, I'm just curious, that's all. But go ahead.
That's great. We're actually very proud of it because it it makes the whole queuing system so much less of an issue because everything that is done on the app that is on your phone and you're given a time to pick up your food. So it's as it's as simple as jarring up, saying, hi, I'm Trevor, they confirm your order and they pass you the food and you're on your way. If you showed up early, that's the reason we try we like to have a space somewhere outside or somebody could just make a lap or a loop around. But it makes it so that our queuing isn't at all what the quick service restaurants or fast food restaurants are because you don't order, you don't pay, you just identify yourself, you confirm the order, your your food is handed to you and you're on your way. So it's a very streamlined system that we're kind of proud of.
Do you find that helps traffic flow at your peak times?
Indeed, it does. And and a lot of people, you know, and when you first open, it's it takes a little while because people will show up and they make an order and it takes a little while for community to learn how to use the app to, you know, they'll they'll be definitely inevitably in the first week of opening, somebody will show up to order and they'll be disappointed that they can't. But then they'll park and come in and eventually people learn how to use it. And it's it's a very efficient method and and it's something that the rest of the industry is starting to to copy from us and I think it's great.
Sure, they'll get the hang of it. Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I want to note, too, as part of the striping, we did add just wording on the pavement for digital pickup ahead to try and try and point that out to people, too. That's what the signs say as well.
Educate.
Throughout the site. Yeah, so.
So I guess my last item would be the we did discuss with the owner of the site in the in the project proponents, the installation of a sidewalk from one entrance to the other for site access. And I know at the last meeting, we talked about the site owner looking at other alternatives from, you know, rather than having to cut the the slope and put a, you know, extensive retaining wall in, maybe bringing it into the site a little more down below where it may impact some of the parking along the street and whether that was looked at, considered and priced out and what their thoughts were. So I guess, Tony, that's probably directed at you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I I'm sure you recall, Denny Marchand, our vice president, Lee Fang joins that last call, so I appreciate you all taking the time to allow him to join and share, you know, our view and comments. We have we have looked at other ideas briefly and honestly, where we stand on that sidewalk is still where we sat at that meeting. And that is that we are not prepared to incorporate a new sidewalk as part of this project. At the at this time, our allocated cost for this project have been locked in and adding a sidewalk is not an option. Additionally, you know, the parking that along that, you know, that main drive and the roadway, even to bring in and push back to allow for a future sidewalk at this time, that that wouldn't require the additional fill and grading. It would affect our ability to have those parking spaces along the front as proposed as part of the project. So at the moment, we have not identified, you know, a design that will work for us to commit to a sidewalk along that that entrance, the connected two entrances.
Okay, but, you know, going forward, as as your plaza begins to thankfully refill and build out, the board would like you to to keep that in mind to accommodate the pedestrian traffic that comes in from the Dire Street entrance. Because there.
Absolutely.
There is considerable foot traffic. I've seen it myself. Just something to keep in mind going forward.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you bringing it up and and discussing. Please be assured it will be a part of our conversations as as continuing developments at the center, you know, of our.
Very good, we appreciate that.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the the applicant is in front of the board for site plan approval and a special permit for a drive-through. So when the board is ready to move forward and and possibly take a vote, whether it's tonight or at a future meeting, I would recommend voting on the site plan first and then the special permit.
Right, because they are two different two different animals. Gentlemen of the board, did you have any questions or comments for Mr. Kiss?
What question? I didn't hear anything about snow removal or storage. Is that anything that's been addressed?
As far as the storage goes, just deliveries will come and they'll store everything on site. As far as snow removal, I will defer to Tony because I don't have any information on that. I'm sure it'll just be.
Deliveries, our food deliveries typically happen in the middle of the night. They have a key lock box. The truck will come in, pull up to the side of the door, walk it into the freezer and leave and and it's typically between midnight and six a.m., so that it won't interfere with any of the traffic in the center.
Okay, this is biggest the storage. I mean, the snow removal and it's going to be stored apparently pushed away from Chipotle out into the parking lot.
All this all the storage for the snow? Oh, okay, sorry, I just understood.
Me, too.
But that's good to know, thank you. Yeah, where is snow storage now?
I know right now, I just drove through the site and you guys got a lot of snow. All the snow now is pushed along here. So I know because Chipotle is part of the larger plaza, it will be part of that snow pile contract. So it would be I mean, I believe we usually leave it up to the snow plow people to kind of figure out where it goes along with the owner. But my my guess would be to push it along here. They could, yeah, you can mount some here, but you'd have to bring it around and push up here and possibly.
So and this is Tony, this is Tony again. I I don't know the exact storage locations or plow to locations for snow removals. I do know that we, our property manager maintains a year-round contract to keep them committed to our site, you know, to respond within so many hours. I also can confirm that we keep salt on site and anytime there's a, you know, forecast of water event, they'll come out and spread it ahead of time, which helps to eliminate any accumulation.
Very good, thank you.
Paul, any questions or comments?
Mr. Shortz, Mr. Betez, and as am I, you're all set.
Just one one quick other quick question on the islands. What type of curbing?
Uh.
Concrete?
Yeah, concrete eighteen-inch curb, I believe. We had a detail. But, yeah, it's concrete curb here. And that's a a standard curb design and it's a good one. It goes below the ground, not the the kind just placed on the ground and the snow plow hits and it's gone.
So I just ask if if you want to board does approve that you just submit a revised plan, site plan, just the site plan, showing curving for all the islands.
Okay.
All right. Just so I have it on file.
Yeah, 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 we will definitely get you the revision we discussed.
You all set?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Aldo, you all set?
I am, thank Mr. Check.
All right, at this point in the hearing, I would ask if there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak in favor of this plan? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in favor of this plan? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in favor of this plan? Hearing none, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in opposition to this plan?
Why, who do you want?
Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in opposition to this plan? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak in opposition to this plan? Hearing none, I move that we close the public meeting. Do I have a second?
Make a second to close the meeting.
A motion made and seconded to close the public meeting.
In hearing.
In hearing, yes. And hearing, thank you. Very good. By voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, this public meeting and meeting is closed. Thank you, Mr. Kiss.
So we're going to take up the item again later in the meeting.
Okay.
For more discussion between the board members, they'll determine what they how they want to handle the matter today.
Okay, so hang tight.
Yeah, don't go away. All right, next, let's move into our public meeting for Rear Main Street off Derby Drive. Let me read the public meeting notice into the record. In accordance with Article 10 of the City of Gardner Zoning Code, Chapter 675-1010, Site Plan Review, notices hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct a public review meeting on Tuesday, January ninth, 2024, at 7:15 p.m. in the Hubbard Conference Room 203 in the Manca Annex 115 Pleasant Street, Gardner, to consider the definitive plan application submitted by the City of Gardner. The definitive plan depicts the redevelopment of land situated behind buildings fronting Main Street and Gardner and west of Derby Drive, which will be converted to provide much-needed parking, pedestrian access to Main Street retail, a park for community gatherings, areas for food truck concessions, and access to land for future residential development. Plans are available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning Room 201 of the City Hall Annex. Anyone persons interested in this matter or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate. Okay, now we have a request for continuance.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, as you know, as the board most likely knows that we've been working on this project for a good couple of years now. And we have a we have a Mass Works grant that we're utilizing for design and construction of this project. And we're now at a point where we've completed the design and we just need to get site plan approval from the planning board because of the parking that is being created by the project. And since our engineers were coming from a couple of hours away out in Western Mass, they had called to see if we would if the planning board would continue the meeting until February thirteenth, when we could have a full presentation. And that's that's what the request was. And I don't, being a city project and the one that's managing the project, I don't have an issue with that. It's not going to affect our timeline at all.
Any issues with that, gentlemen?
No, no.
Motion to continue till the next.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public meeting for the definitive site plan, Rear Main Street off Derby Drive, until our February thirteenth meeting. Any discussion? All right, then, by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This public meeting is continued until February thirteenth.
Chairman, if we're just for the record, six thirty?
At six thirty p.m., thank you. Okay, now we'll transition into our regular meeting. First item of business is approval of minutes for the December twelfth meeting.
And make a motion, we approve the minutes from the December twelfth meeting.
Second, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from our December twelfth meeting. Any discussion? By voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, minutes are approved. New business, definitive site plan and special permit for the proposed Chipotle Mexican Grill at 360 Timpani Boulevard, Gardner. We had a rather in-depth presentation tonight. I guess if gentlemen do want to vote to approve the definitive site plan, we need to start building our conditions. And I believe one of them would be a revised site plan showing curved islands as a condition. Mr. Power grab, would you concur? Or would that just be an engineer-to-engineer thing?
I don't necessarily think we need to condition it. I think, you know, we we have the applicant on record stating that they'll do it and we'll we'll receive a revised plan after this meeting showing it. and we'll receive a revised plan after this meeting, showing it. So I don't really think it needs to be conditioned.
Okay, I would say that would probably be the same for the flow of construction vehicles. That doesn't need to be conditioned, does it?
Well, that's hard to board. That's, yeah, I mean, it's, you can't really, I think it's just, yeah, more recommendation. Use your best judgment at the site, I mean, especially the owner who has, you know, tenants there that may be impacted by the vehicles, just to make sure that things are coordinated, you know, in a meaningful way to protect the general public in the interest of the retailers at the site.
I'm sure the engineer doesn't know. I mean, coming from south to north, there's a curb there before you get to the plaza. And one of those trucks are coming out of that south entrance. It's, it's, it's quick. You can't see, and I believe that's what we're talking about is the safety on these vehicles, these big trucks coming out. The time they get to their first, second gear, because it's on an angle line, these cars come from south to north, they're coming pretty good. They might not be able to see the, they'll see it.
Well, yeah.
They'll see the truck.
Yeah, no, I know. We don't want that.
Right. I think that's all, I think that's all the concern is about there, that's all.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely look closely at that and we'll be in touch as this project-
Like the director said, it's more of a judgment.
Yeah, just, he's correct. So if you want, I can hit on the ones that we need to-
Yeah, go ahead. You're much more intimate with us than I am, so if you wouldn't mind hitting on some of those.
So I did send, I'm not sure if, Chris, do we have any more copies of this draft special permit decision?
I can give mine.
Just so, Derek. I don't, I did send a copy to Tony and David of the draft special permit, and, I mean, basically the first few sections. It's real standard language. Just the procedural history of the actual project. All the documentations that have been submitted for the project. General findings of the project. And then, that's under A, and then B is the special permit criteria. So basically, that's taken rid of our zoning code. And then the following section, C, the special findings from the planning board as part of the condition, I mean, as part of the approval. And again, they kind of relate back to the general, the special permit criteria. So basically, we're saying that the, the planning board's saying in C that we're approving the project based on the project meeting the special permit criteria. And this is how it meets each one.
Okay.
And then the final section of decision is where we outline, again, the standard facts of the project itself. And there are a couple in here that I just want to clarify with the applicant and possibly the city engineer. If everybody wants to take a quick, some time to just look at this, the decision section.
Do you have a copy? I don't think so.
Chris Gavis.
Oh, she did do.
Sorry.
Now I have a second copy.
Well, number five. If, if applicable, that's, I added that. The operation and maintenance of the stormwater facility shall be in compliance with the stormwater management plan. That's probably not needed in this case.
Yeah, it's an existing facility that probably doesn't have one.
So I can take number five out, yeah.
Okay.
And it's not within ConCon jurisdiction, so.
Let's see, twelve is blank?
Yeah, twelve, it's, yeah, I, so that's something we need to fill and I just delete altogether. The construction activities shall be restricted to weekdays and Saturdays between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Any exception to this condition shall require approval from the building commissioner at least twenty-five, twenty-four hours in advance.
Okay.
And seven therefore negates twelve.
Yeah, that is more, I think, for store operation hours, but I'm not sure that's something we want to-
I don't think we need to be spelling that out, please.
Yep. I agree, Mr. Chairman. I left it in just in case.
Yes, sir.
The permit shall expire if not exercised within one year of issuance. And I don't believe there are any waivers requested.
No.
Um, I think, okay. I don't know if I'm listening to any conditions, right?
It's pretty simple.
Yeah. Is there a chance to review it on the Chipotle and the ownership end? Are they still on the call?
I'm sorry, this is Tony. I think David dropped off, but I'm able to get him by text. But I wasn't able to hear the question.
Okay, so we're just, we reviewed the final section of the special permit, the draft special permit. And I'm just making sure that everybody had a chance to review it and we're comfortable with all the clauses within that decision. I think there's four.
Yes.
Yeah. I was thinking of.
Yes, I have reviewed it, just emailed it just for the meeting. And I'm comfortable with everything. And I'm also comfortable if you would like to, if you all feel more comfortable adding a note in one of the construction sections that, you know, we will work with your staff to identify and control construction equipment entrance and exit from the site.
Mrs. Eric?
I mean, it's a private site, as long as it's not a nuisance to the public travel on the public way. I don't have a real issue with it. They can certainly consult with us at the time of construction, but I don't think it needs to be a condition.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, Tony, our biggest concern is the, is, and I think Derek addressed it, is the construction vehicles dragging debris out into Route 68 and, you know, the public right of way. And it is a ways from the site entrance and exit, so. But if just, you know, just having the contractor keep an eye on that and, you know, if it requires daily cleanup or weekly cleanup, then, you know, that's how we'll, that's how, that's how you'll have to address it.
Absolutely, and we'll make sure that's, that's part of the contract requirements as well. You also had on here, I think, number 11, and David just confirmed, store hours or restaurant hours are 10:45 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, we're just going to eliminate that. That's something that we don't want to dictate through the special permit. I mean, that's some, I mean, none of the other businesses down there are regulated like that, so I don't think there's any reason why Chipotle should be regulated like that. Does the board agree with you on that one?
Yes, do the liquor license if they have liquor in there, right?
But they don't. It's, chain, chain restaurant's going to have pretty standard hours with pretty much everything else in the area, so I don't think we need to be conditioning that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to eliminate that one.
Okay.
Anything else you want to highlight or anything? Nope. All right, in light of that, gentlemen, we have the option at this time of either continuing or we can vote on, two votes, one for the definitive site plan and the other one for the special permit for the drive-through. Those are our options, what is the board's will and pleasure.
We make a motion then to accept the definite site plan for Chipotle Restaurant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, very good.
Third.
With one condition.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. The single condition of a special permit for a drive-through facility shall be granted by the planning board, which we're going to address next.
The only condition of the site plan approval would be that to get the special permit, because we're going to be-
Yeah.
Probably voted on this, but it's a condition, yeah.
Yeah.
The way it's done.
So now it becomes one in the same.
All right, vote has been made and a motion has been made and seconded by the roll. Please, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Bitez?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the special permit for the drive-through.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the
Special permit.
Special permits.
Approval.
Approval.
Approval for the drive-through.
I'll second that.
Also seconded, any discussion on that, gentlemen? Very good, by the roll again, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Bitez?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. You're in business.
Great. Appreciate all the help the city's given us and all the time you guys have taken to it.
Get your sludge jammers out.
Oh, I know, they're ready to go. Trust me, they're very ready, so.
I heard a lot of positive stuff in the city. They're all very excited that Chipotle's coming to town, so.
Okay, good.
Very good, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure there's not one in town already. I'm sure it's going to be very, very busy when it begins.
Thank you for your presentation and answering our questions. We wish you all good luck with your project.
All right, thank you.
With respect, are we able to ask the next steps with this, with respect to the city?
So the special permit, there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
So we'll file it with the city clerk tomorrow. That appeal period starts then. And once that appeal period's up, the city clerk will sign off on the special permit. And you'll be able to receive the original for register, for registration.
Great.
Registration deeds.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, and I can add on, on the public works side of things, the DPW requires, there's a utility connection application you'll need to do. That'll include presumably your site plan to go in with the disconnection fees. But that's fairly straightforward and it's all available through the city website on the DPW's page.
No construction bonds are required?
No.
No contractor obligation?
Um, there are some contractor bonds required. If you're digging in the public right of way, which I don't believe you will be, so you probably get.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll make sure we get that exhibited here, showing those curves. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Yes, thank you.
Drive safely.
Yeah. We appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
We're very proud to get this project started.
Yep. Awesome.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Tony. Thank you, good night. Okay, next up, continuation, public meeting, definitive site plan for Private Oversight LLC, Zero West Broadway. Now, we have received a request from counsel for the owner. Let me just read it to you. We respectfully request, this is from Christine Tree Legal, respectfully request an extension of the Private Oversight LLC matters scheduled to be heard on January 9, 2024, to be heard at the March or April 2024 meeting. A special permit application before the Gardner ZBA for its first January meeting, which is a week after next, I think. Next Tuesday?
Sixteenth, yeah.
Sixteenth, all right. For its first January meeting, which is the sixteenth, includes an appeal of the building commissioner's interpretation of the term principal building in Section 675-770, which should be resolved before proceedings for site plan approval proceed before the planning board. I have to say, I agree with her. Are you amenable to a continuation to all the way to April?
I would recommend extending it out to April, and if it happens before that, it happens before it. But I would recommend.
That's true, we're not handcuffed to April. If it happens before, then, you know, we pick them up again February or March. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we extend the time to April for the next meeting?
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded to extend the matter of the public meeting for Zero West Broadway, Private Oversight LLC until our April 2024 meeting. Any further discussion? Very good, round the table we go. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Bitez?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. All right, our next meeting is Tuesday, February 13 at 6:30 p.m. And also, we will be with the city council for a joint public meeting on Tuesday, January 16 at 6:45 p.m.
Excellent. Thanks for remembering that, Mr. Chairman.
I made a special note, so I'd remember it. Anything else?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, adjourned, adjourned. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Please don't leave without signing.